All right, I guess you're all aware that we just had a system crash and we've lost everybody. It's like seventy people in back. I don't know if it's everybody that started with. Possibly is gonna happen again, folks. I really apologize for this. We weren't aware of the capacity that only a hundred people can log on to the meeting. And certainly, we didn't know that there was a time limit. We did have a previous town hall meeting in the summertime and there was no time limit on that one. So if it happens again, you know, you're just gonna have to log back in. To rectify the situation, I think the best that we can do is, as we said earlier, we're gonna record it. We'll post it on our social media, but we might just have another meeting within the next two weeks and we'll do this all again and hopefully we'll fix the bugs before then. So again, I apologize. Tommy, if you're ready with that video, you can play it.
Hi, I'm Martin Chico-Charlie from the Toronto Police. I'm here with my partner Tom Blaga. I want to make you aware of a traffic pedestrian safety campaign that Toronto Police has launched. It will be for the week and it's called Winter Watch. And it addresses speeding, aggressive driving, distracted driving, and impaired driving. A lot of fatalities happened in the winter months and it's because of the reduced daylight hours and the reduced visibility at times. Please pay attention to speed limits. Please pay attention to your surroundings and obey the laws and be safe.
Get it back up? All right, thanks, Tom. Just gonna introduce our traffic complaints officer here at twenty-two division and that's PC Carpic. Jimmy, if you want to just say a couple of words?
Hello, how are you? It's Jim Carpic. Just to add to that, part of this campaign was brought about because in the last three years, we had approximately one hundred and sixty-five, I believe, fatalities. But the alarming part of that is that forty-four percent of those were actually pedestrians that were crossing the street and not using a nearby crosswalk or crossover. So you're looking at approximately seventy of the one hundred and sixty fatalities probably could have been avoided. And we really have to remember that, that when we're out for a walk, especially if we're walking on the roadway, wear visible clothing and by all means, use the sidewalk if you can and use a crosswalk or a crossover to get from one side of the street to the other. If you check the city of Toronto bylaw, it actually states that the Toronto Police Service, their understanding is, is that if you're within thirty meters of a crosswalk or crossover, you should be using that. And if you don't, you actually could be charged with a violation. So I think that really has to be remembered for these wide open roadways like Islington, Kipling Avenue, that you often see pedestrians just crossing the street when they could easily use the crosswalks at the traffic light intersections. So we'll be enforcing some of these rules that Constable Blaga had mentioned over the next week during the campaign. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy. And just so everybody's aware, a lot of the complaints that the PC Carpet gets do come through the self-reporting portal. A lot of people send them in that way. So that's where he gets a lot of his work from. Right now, what I'm gonna do, I apologize, not the best, but I'm gonna share a map with you. And this is... Can everybody see that okay? No, let me try one more time here. Can't see that yet.
Did you hit share screen?
I did. All right, modern technology at its best here, folks. Sorry about that. Let's share this first. I'm gonna introduce the officers that work in the unit. The way the city of Toronto works is various neighborhoods throughout the city running from Atobaco all the way out to Scarborough. And twenty-two division has, if you see over here on the screen, I've got it numbered, number nine. That's how twenty-two division starts according to the city of Toronto neighborhoods. We go from nine all the way down to twenty. And there's two neighborhood or two community response unit officers that are assigned to each one of your neighborhoods. And I'm gonna give you a map if I can get to it in a couple of minutes to show you where everyone is. But if you just look up on the screen here, Eden, Humber, Bridge, Humber Valley is PC Derek Davy. That's his email there. And then sharing the neighborhood with him is PC Jaspar Mahar. And his email is here. We'll put those emails up on the screen later on in the chat so that you guys can save them for yourselves. Those same two officers take care of Princess and Rosethorn neighborhoods and they're up in the top northeast of our division. We move down to Constable Stephen Hogg and Constable Michael Hedger. And they take care of the neighborhoods of Arrangate, Centennial, West Dean and Marklin Woods. So they're kind of up in the northwest area of twenty-two division. Move down a little bit and we have PC Marlon Lacuna and PC James Richardson. And they take care of two neighborhoods, the West Mall, Atobaco West Mall and Islington Center West, which is kind of the central part of twenty-two division. And I'm gonna have a short presentation from our neighborhood community officers. But we have some other officers that help us do community work in these neighborhoods. And you can see over here on the left, the NCOs take care of the West Mall flats which fall in the Atobaco West Mall neighborhood. Then they also take care of the East Mall flats, Maybell Avenue and Cordova Avenue, which fall within the Islington City Center West neighborhoods. I'm gonna give you those contacts also. Moving down to Kingsway South and Stonegate Queensway, which is kind of in the central east part of twenty-two division. The two officers that take care of that are Anisa Mars and Vincent Manila. And then we have Minoco and New Toronto, which is in the southeast corner of twenty-two division. The two officers that take care of that area are Julian Walker and Chad Pullen. And then in the southwest part of Atobaco is the Long Branch neighborhood and Alderwood. And the two officers that are responsible for those neighborhoods are John Reed and Sean Smiglio. Unfortunately, I can't get to that map that shows the neighborhoods right now, but we will put up those names for you. Let me just see if I can get down to the neighborhood officers and then that'll get the segue into Sergeant Sparr who's in charge of the neighborhood community officers. Okay, and as I said earlier, there's the neighborhood community officers. We have Anthony Alexander, JP Dicchaca, Tab Garcia and Zoran Ivakovic, who are on one side. And the officers that share the neighborhoods with them are Marcin Kamada, Lisa Penny, Jermaine Watt, Dimon Evans, and her sergeant is Natasha Zaver. And I'll let her say a few words.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. My name's Natasha Zaver and I'm the sergeant for the Neighborhood Community Officer Program. I'm not sure if everybody is aware of the program, but the, for short form, we call them the NCOs. So they work in partnership with the local residents and community-based organizations to address community safety and quality of life issues. Part of their mandate is to, that, part of their mandate includes building relationships and solving problems that are, that may be brought up by community members or things that they see like trends in the neighborhoods. So they'll work together with the community members and the businesses to help solve those problems or reduce crime in their assigned neighborhoods. The officers ensure that the neighborhoods' concerns are addressed promptly by working collaboratively with the residential community agencies. And that part of that is to build sustainable solutions. So we want to work together to, you know, to make sure we can do something for the long term and, you know, help build that relationship and trust between the police and the community. As Sergeant Laramie had mentioned already, twenty-two division currently has two teams of four community officers. So there'd be eight officers and they work in seven on, seven off schedule. Their, and their neighborhoods include, as already mentioned, the Maybell and Dundas Street West area, as well as the East Mall Flats, which is East Mall Rathburg, and the West Mall Flats, which is West Mall and Rathburg. Unfortunately, I can't get onto the computer to bring up the, the website for the Toronto Police website. But if you do go in there, or you can actually just Google in Toronto Police Neighborhood Officer Program, and it will bring you to the Toronto Police site and it'll bring you to the Neighborhood Officer Program. And on that page, it'll say, Find My Neighborhood Officer. You click on that and it will list all the divisions in the city and which officers are assigned to which area. So again, we have four officers that are working right now. And if they want to say something to, to introduce themselves and which areas that they represent here today, thank you.
Yeah, hi, everyone. It's Anthony Alexander.
And Zoran Ivakovic.
So we are jointly in, in collaboration with two other team members on our team and then subsequently four members on the other team responsible for, as previously mentioned, East Mall, West Mall, Maybell Capri. And there's not much more to add outside of what Sergeant Zer has already, already stated. But yeah, busy and all about, all about building community relationships and solving problems and just taking time and sorting our, in our neighborhoods.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Appreciate that. I'm gonna introduce PC Hamilton and she'll give you a short short presentation on what we call FOCUS.
Thank you, Sergeant. Hello, everyone. I'm Officer Hamilton. I am the FOCUS Coordinator for twenty-two division. FOCUS is a program that's run in conjunction with City of Toronto, United Way and Toronto Police. And it actually is an acronym like everything in our service. It stands for furthering our community by uniting services. So every week, we sit at a table and a number of different services around the city that provide housing, mental health support. Toronto Fire is part of it, EMS, organizations that would otherwise come in contact with individuals or families that could require a joint task force to provide services. And these families and individuals are brought to the table by officers who attend calls. They're brought to the table by concerned neighbors and they're brought to the table by any services that already have contact with those individuals. Could also be TDSB, any elderly services that operate in the city. And the service comes together to assess the acute elevated risk factor. And the goal is to find a resolution, much like the Neighborhood Officers, that is permanent and can result in less use of collaborative resource and more focused on getting the person the help they really need. So if you have any more questions about that, I am at twenty-two. You know where to find me.
All right, thanks. And that brings us to question and answer part of the night and that's most important. And this is where you get to ask us the questions and we'll try and answer them. So feel free and like I said, if you can raise your hand, that would be the easiest. We can try and do it that way. But I know a number of you are not on video and I don't know if you can actually raise your hand, especially those on the phone. So let's see what we can do and we'll go ahead. Are there any questions?
If I can ask a quick question, I didn't hear Willeridge area being mentioned. Is Willeridge twenty-two or twenty-three division?
Willeridge is in twenty-three division.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, I got a question from Martha Scott. Go ahead. You're, you just have to unmute yourself. Try again.
Okay, can you hear me? Sorry.
Yeah, I can hear you now.
So I live in Humber Bay Shores and many residents here are really concerned about illegal activities in our waterfront parks, Humber Bay Park East and Humber Bay Park West. So I wondered if you could speak to that. I guess specifically we're concerned about fireworks, about rowdy parties and drinking and littering and all these.
Okay, I'm gonna pass that off to Constable, Constable Walker. She's in charge of the neighborhoods that you're talking about there. You're coming in and out a little bit there.
Sorry, yeah, I saw that. So I'm just wondering what the plan is for, for security in the parks themselves. I guess last, last summer, the parking lots were closed on the weekend nights and there were, were quite a few patrols happening. So will that be continued?
Hi, Martha. I'm Constable Walker. That is the neighborhood that I, I, I take care of. And there has been a lot of complaints of that nature, which is why we enhanced our summer safety initiative to the park and waterfront area last summer and the summer before that. We anticipate that it's going to be carried forward again this year because it is really, it's, it's a good way for us to get out there and be, sorry, good way for us to get out there and to be in the public and to deal with these issues. Just us being down there on bikes, in cars is a deterrent. We find that when the parks, parking lots close at seven o'clock, it deters some of the people that like to come in and party. If you can get in before then, then you are free to use the park until it closes. And that is at eleven o'clock at night. However, the officers do patrol those areas. And again, we do patrol it on bikes, putting out bonfires and, and deterring people from liquor license offenses. The problem with fireworks is that they happen and we can't predict where they're going to happen. Chances are, we are not going to be there right when it happens and see who did it, just like a lot of, a lot of problems that we have down there. But we are down there and hopefully that in itself is a deterrent.
All right, we have a question from Anna. Go ahead, Anna.
I just wanted to further ask Officer Walker, just to keep in mind that now Humber Bay East is closed off and it will be for the next couple of years. So anyone who wishes to use that side of the park will probably be going to Humber Bay West. So if the officers could please keep in mind that there will be an increase of folks on the west side. So that, just so you're aware, I'm not sure if that's being kept in mind.
Thank you, Anna. We are aware of the closure of Humber East and it will be closed for quite some time. We still do some patrols in that park just because we do get some calls for people setting up tents and camping there when they shouldn't be. So just because it's closed doesn't mean we're not still patrolling it. But yes, it would cause an influx to the other parks in that area. We are aware of that and we will plan for that accordingly.
Thank you. Excellent.
Well, Amber Morley, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Hello, I just wanted to say thank you guys so much for your service and for the time you took to, you know, be here with our community today. My question is sort of a two-part question. Part one is related to the Garnet James neighborhood. There was a lot of movement. We had a number of meetings and there was some talk around and a petition related to getting some CCTV cameras for the area. So I, A, wanted to just see if there was any updates around that particular initiative. And the second thing I was wondering, sort of in conjunction with that, is we had put forward a request for neighborhood NCOs for that neighborhood as well and Garnet James in New Toronto. And I'm not sure if those conversations have progressed at all or where that landed, but I was just hoping if we can get a bit of an update. That would be.
All right, I will send that off to Constable Walker because that's her neighborhood again.
Thank you, Amber. I do remember you from those meetings back in the summer of Garnet James and that has progressed very well. The petition was very well received with over twelve hundred signatures. The proposal was approved and that CCTV camera project is underway. Emergency management and public order is liaising with Hydro and Black and McDonald's to get the poles erected in the neighborhood. And we foresee that the project should officially be underway, like ground being broken in the next, hopefully, month or two. So that is huge progress for us. It's the first cameras in twenty-two division. So we're very proud of that and all the support that we had from the community. Huge initiative and it wouldn't have been done without all of our community meetings and the support from that neighborhood. So, and I thank you for being a part of that as well. As far as the NCOs in Garnet James, it assisted with a proposal for that. So I am aware of what you're talking about. I'm going to ask that Sergeant Sparr speaks to that. I under the impression that it wasn't approved. However, I'm not sure if it's still being considered for future nominations.
Yes, hi, Amber. And everybody else, just to answer your question with regards to the NCO expansion. I know a business case was put forward last year. We're just waiting on it to go through command right now. So I know our budget has increased. But again, it has to go through command. So I can't give you a definite answer until, of course, we hear from the higher ups.
Thank you. No, that's really helpful. And I know we've seen a lot of some of the other neighborhood officers down, officers down in our area for some special events. And so we're really appreciative of your ongoing support and we'll keep posted on those discussions. Thank you so much.
I'm really hoping it happens, but we'll see. Thank you, Amber.
All right, I see a hand up from Maria. Maria, go ahead.
Thank you. A number of years ago, not that long ago, I think it's pre-pandemic, I'm in the Rosethorn elementary school area. We had coffee with our neighborhood police and you were interested in what was happening in our neighborhood. And one of the things that a number of us, particularly seniors, mentioned is if you could do a pass-through, a driveabout, or in the summertime, a bicycle through. There is a lot of activity in the park by the tennis courts and the elementary school during very odd hours. Not that your drive-through at night would be helpful, but during the day. We need to, we need to have some visibility and we feel in our community, we never see you.
Okay, I'm going to let Constable Davy take that one. Rosethorn is one of his neighborhoods. Derek, are you there?
Hi there. Hi. So as the sergeant said earlier, he's gonna post our emails in the comments. If you want to send me an email directly with certain times or exact locations, we can definitely increase the patrol in those neighborhoods. We do unfortunately get called to the south end of the division a lot. And we do need to spend some more time in the north end. So like I said, if you could send me an email with the exact times or the exact locations, I can definitely make sure we start that right away with increased patrol throughout the day.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
And just further to that, you made a mention about having coffee with the officers and came up with that. That actually is one of the programs that we had in the past, pre-COVID. Everything's pre-COVID nowadays. But officers would actually go out to a coffee shop and it would be kind of like a drop-in, a free-for-all. And whoever happened to be walking by at the time could come in and talk to us and talk about really anything that came to mind, any issues that you had in your, in your neighborhood. And fingers crossed that this current wave recides real soon and we can get back out doing that hopefully in the spring. And so watch out for that. We will post it to social media that we're thinking of doing whatever coffee shop. And we're trying to, we'll try and get as many neighborhoods in as we can. So look for that coming up soon.
Okay, that would be helpful because your visibility, if you recall, at Java Joe's, there was a lineup just to, to see you, almost to touch you, you know, that you existed.
You sure that wasn't just for the coffee?
No, it wasn't just for the coffee. Thank you.
All right, thanks so much. Catherine, you have your name up. You've been waiting a little while. Go ahead, Catherine. Yeah, they can hear you. You just have to speak up. There you go. You're there.
Okay, sorry about that. I just, first of all, thank you for all you do and we're grateful to you as a community. And you do it in such good spirits too, by the way. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
On it, yeah, no, and but on another note, we live on Marine Parade Drive and historically, I know over the years before it was developed, there was a lot of drug dealing and prostitution in this area. And we are told and we've seen some evidence of drug dealing and prostitution again. And I want to keep statistics. Does the public have any information on whether there is an increase in this type of criminal activity? And is this safe generally, this, this area?
I'll leave that to.
Sorry to ruin the movie.
That's your area again.
Again, that is my area. And I am, I am familiar in the past when there was the motel strip and savory sorts that attended that place. There was places, I should say.
Was that before you were born?
It was not before I was born, unfortunately. And what's happened since is that has been taken down and beautiful condos have gone up. And unfortunately, there is still drug trafficking in that area. It's not, it's not, should I say, common. It's not uncommon. It's, it's one of those things where you may see it and we are aware of it and we are trying to put officers in that area in a capacity that they could deal with that. That would be as, as uniformed officers, we try to deter things by our visible presence. But when we want to go out in a plainclothes capacity, we're better able to make observations of the people that are responsible and stop the activity that way. So we do have officers from our major crime unit that are on this call. As well, as you know, we're constantly in the area. But again, it happens in places where we don't always get to, and it's important that the public, if they see this stuff, lets us know. We need to know what you're seeing so that we can confirm whether or not it is actually drug dealing or something else. Um, so please, when you see that kind of stuff, don't hesitate to call our office or to file a report online. Uh, you can call into our office and just have us go investigate something if you have information.
And there's always Crime Stoppers too, if you want to remain anonymous. Uh, there was one comment that you made there about, you're asking if it was a neighborhood's unsafe, not in the, not at all. You live in a very nice neighborhood down there. It's um, the summertime, we're out there all the time. You might not see us as much in the wintertime because we're in cars, but in the summertime, we're on bikes uh, riding along that path all the time down there on Marine Parade.
Thanks so much.
Uh, Professor M, you have your hand up. Go ahead, sir.
There we go. Hi, thank you so much for doing this. We really appreciate it. Um, this is kind of a strange uh, situation, but uh, just behind you on the south side of the tracks, there's a um, uh, parking lot that's uh, for the TTC. I'm not sure if you're aware, but it is turning into a drag strip again. You know what I'm referring to?
Uh, I, I know the area that you're talking about, yes.
Yeah, um, there was two guys doing drifting yesterday, no, the day before yesterday. And one guy fishtailed. I thought he was gonna roll it. Um, it's getting kind of dangerous. Um, I know you're in, it's an unusual situation because like, it's like your fireworks thing. You know, when does it happen? But it happens on a fairly regular basis. It hasn't been since the weather's been bad. But like last fall, it was like almost every second night, motorcycles racing up and down that strip uh, parking lot. Um, I even saw a father bringing a kid with go-karts. Um, you know, I, I don't know what to do about it because it's not a 911, pardon me, not a 911 call. Um, 311, I think, or it's not a 311 call. So what do we do about that situation? Do you want to even hear about it or, you know, like what?
Absolutely.
I'm afraid someone's gonna get hurt.
Right. Uh, now that we're aware of it, I'm not sure, this is news to me. Possibly PC Carpic, I'm not sure if you're still on yet. You're there, Jimmy. Have you received any complaints in regards to this in the past?
I'll tell you, that's the first time I've heard. I, I think you mean the street that would be adjacent to the west side of Kipling, just that parking lot that's owned by the TTC behind the Kipling subway?
Not so much the west. It's the east side. There's a long strip of parking lots. It's the same parking lot, but it's on the east side of Kipling, on the south side of the tracks. Right behind where you are, like right behind.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's, but, but it's all joined to the same parking area.
Correct. But there are, there are cars in the west one, so I guess maybe it doesn't give them enough run space. Whereas the other one, because of the lack of customers, it's pretty clear, pretty empty. But every, on a regular, fairly regular basis, they use it as a drag strip and go-kart track and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And motorcycles.
And that's, and that's the thing, it, that was newly paved, I think, within the last 12 months. So it probably attracts the people because it's new pavement, but that's the first time I've heard of it. So I'd appreciate if you could put that on one of our online driving complaints. So we can then send it out to the different officers that do enforcement and they can patrol that area. Because the only real issue that we've had with that type of uh, driving in parking lots is behind the Centennial Park Arena and in the Sherway Gardens parking area on Sundays. So we've been patrolling those two areas, especially Centennial Park in the afternoon. It seems to be a real issue with some of the school kids coming during lunchtime and doing donuts on, on, on the parking area. You can see the skid marks that are left and, and stuff. So I've charged several youths with, with different uh, driving offenses in that area. But uh, by all means, I'll take a look at that Kipling area as well now.
Yeah, it, I, I wish I could have a better timing for you. They don't really actually post a sign for the drag race, but uh, it's, it was, two nights ago, it was, as I said, people were drifting and you could just hear the tires spinning. The ironic thing is there was an, an officer driving down Kipling at the same time. But I don't think he'd have a good view from the bridge, but uh, you know, it's just kind of ironic, but uh, I'm sorry, I don't. Oh yeah, we're on the, sorry, we're on the 27th floor at uh, the condos. Um, would you like me to film it? I've done it before.
Yeah, sure. I'll tell you, if, if you could see that and, and, and obviously would have a timestamp, then you can add that as an attachment on the driving complaint itself. So I have a record of it then.
In the meantime, I'll, I'll put it out. I mean, just to have a record for it. Um, I did triphoning a couple of times, but I was put on hold for half an hour. I'm sorry, and I gave up. You know, somebody said, oh, give it to an officer? So I know.
And it could be something that the city might want to close off that section during the nighttime, because I know there's a um, the entrance on that east-west street. So they could maybe close that off because it's probably not needed for the Kipling or, or, or the ghost station there.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. And actually, it's a, that would be a good idea. I mean, there is the pay entrance, you know, on uh, the west side.
Right.
But they never, they never seem to go in that way and they certainly take off that, the gate you're talking about, but there is no gate. It's just an open hall. So, yeah, it's um, as I say, I, I, I just worried, like yesterday, day before yesterday, my apologies. Uh, if someone fishtailed going all the way down it and, and like after drifting, they sort of took off to go to the gate to take off. And one guy, I, I, I thought he was, because you know there's lampposts in there too, right? I thought he was just gonna roll it and hit into the post. So I'm, I'm really concerned that someone's gonna hurt themselves. Plus, it's really makes a loud noise a lot.
Oh, exactly.
I'm sorry for dragging this on long. Um, but I'll, I'll send a report.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention. That's one of those ones that we weren't aware of, so we certainly will look into it for you.
Yeah, well, I appreciate it, at least for their sake, safety. It's noisy. I'll give it that. The motorcycles are fun.
We have a hand up from Barry. Barry, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. I just wanted to add um, some comments about the Humber um, Bay West and East parks. Uh, it's not only happening, uh, that being fireworks and fires and partying um, just in those areas, but all along the shoreline. You can smell the green wood. Uh, they're cutting down some of the trees. They're, they're breaking up park benches. And I called down to the station a couple of times and you guys put me under the fire department. The fire department came down, they ran away, they put out the fire and, you know, nothing's really done. Um, that and the fireworks, uh, the fireworks last year, I had some uh, success working with uh, PC Po and his crew. And they came down and they dealt with some individuals that uh, were letting off fireworks around the, the 12 o'clock timeframe, but uh, it happens throughout the night at different times and it's, it's so disruptive. Um, we moved into the area uh, last June. And the times that we did come down and check it out were, weren't at 12 o'clock at night or late at night. And uh, it's a real carnival atmosphere uh, during the summertime. Okay, that being said, the other thing I wanted to talk about, and I'm going to submit a report, but it has to do with uh, speeding on Waterfront Drive. It's a one-way street. Um, people come around that corner from uh, Palace Pier Court. And I'll, I have to say, sometimes I'm just wondering if they're gonna hit the bicycles that are, are, are coming down because there's a bicycle lane that's allotted for that. And uh, I, I'm sure we're gonna see a fatality at some point because of the people that uh, just don't respect the uh, the speed limits, um, both for Palace Pier Court and Waterfront Drive, their 40K. I wrote a note to, or a letter to Mark Grimes, uh, stipulating uh, all these particular things that I just had mentioned. And I said, if they wanted to put a speed camera towards the end of Waterfront Drive, they would make a killing. Um, not only that, we have loud noises from cars that race down there at all different times of night. And we have people going in the wrong direction to go to the end of Palace Pier Court and hang out. Uh, and then they race down the road again an hour later after they've had a beer or cigarette or whatever they're doing down there. Um, but very disruptive from a, a sleep perspective. And um, like I said, I'm gonna file a report uh, from the traffic perspective, but uh, I didn't know if you guys knew about a lot of this one wrongly travel on Waterfront Drive, which um, is, is a big issue. And uh, I think we're gonna see some, something that we don't want to see if, if this continues on. And uh,
Thanks Barry for bringing that to our attention. We are actually aware of um, a lot of problems uh, in, in that area, especially with the speed of uh, that, that whole area has a very low speed limit. Um, but people go down there and they don't seem to pay much attention to it. And it's so heavily populated with pedestrians and cyclists. Um, so we do pay attention to that, but a, a report from you uh, for specifically Waterfront Drive would, um, I know that PC Carpic would look into that and so would the rest of our crew. Uh, with regards to the bonfires, and they do go across the entire waterfront. They aren't just limited to that. We do go on all our trail systems through 22 Division, all the way up to Eglington and put out fires all summer long. So for the rest of you that um, may have bonfires in your, in your areas, please know that we don't just focus on the waterfront, although it is our primary concern with our paid-duty officers down in the parks. Uh, regular patrols are done in all our other parks.
Okay, thank you.
And uh, just to touch on that, I know you said that you uh, put in a, a letter or complaint to Counselor Grimes' office. Uh, we are, work in unison with um, Counselor Grimes and also Counselor Holliday, who I, I believe is on here. I see you there. Sure, yeah, there you go. And I believe there's somebody here from uh, Counselor Grimes' office also. And uh, so when they get any complaints in regards to any of the neighborhoods in Toronto, might be a police-related uh, incident. They certainly let us know uh, very quickly. We know within hours of you sending the email and we do act on it uh, rather quickly. So, thanks so much for that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Let's see if there's any more hands up. I know we have some questions online that, uh, oh, there we go. We have one from uh, Steve Ulrich. Wanna go ahead, sir?
Yeah, good evening. Um, thank you so much. First, thanks uh, to all the officers in 22 Division. Um, I wanted to just circle back on a quick uh, comment from Constable Walker there around the summertime um, blitz we saw in Humber Bay shores. Um, for those of you I have not met, I am the volunteer director with Humber Bay Shores Residence Association, a volunteer organization in the Humber Bay Shores area. Uh, comprised of community members, basically investing interest in our community and the safety and wellbeing and livability of our community as well. Um, we saw a tremendous improvement uh, this summer from the reduce of fireworks, uh, the parties. Uh, yes, they still happen, but uh, after your enforcement from 22 Division, uh, and just that visible presence, we, we saw a real reduction in the chaos. It was a little bit more controlled chaos. It was a little bit more organized and it was very appreciated. So uh, we hope to see that come back this summer. Um, I will say on one, I guess, point of comment and, and I guess a question is, um, with the Humber Bay Park uh, east under construction, uh, inevitably, the parking lots are now closed. The park is largely fenced off. And in surprise, our, our crime problems in the parks, uh, at least in the east park uh, overnight seem to be quieter and reduced. And I'm wondering if um, there's any sort of data being collected to kind of uh, prove a proof of concept on this notion of closing the parking lots at night uh, or enforcing at night and the reduction in crime or calls that, that result from that. Um, Officer, uh, Constable Walker, I believe was your name. Did you have any um, update on if there's anything being tracked right now on that?
Well, I, I can speak to the fact that because it's closed, there are no radio calls for that area. Um, the reduction of that kind of thing actually can be found on our Toronto Police Portal. If you're looking to find out about incidents in a specific area. Uh, and I know Constable Balaiga uh, has put that on the chat. Um, and he can put that on again if you need it. Um, but that way you'll be able to actually do your own research and see, because it's open open data and it's available for everybody to see what kind of crimes are reported across Toronto um, and in your specific area. Um, as for us, I'm getting radio calls to the area. Um, again, obviously, Humber East, uh, we have we don't get any there because it's closed. From uh, recently, there was uh, somebody pitched a tent that was about it. So it is, it is actually decreasing, um, closing the parks at, closing the parking lots at seven I spoke to earlier. And how that uh, is one way that we minimize the number of people that can come into the park and cause problems.
Yeah, perfect.
Answers your question.
Yeah, that's great. And, and certainly I will look up the, the data. Uh, one last question I had was, um, where can we find the criteria on NCOs? So you touched a little bit on the organized crime that uh, you know, this area was prone to prior to the condos. Uh, and now the condo towers offer a whole other level of harboring organized crime uh, inside the condo towers. I'm wondering what the NCO criteria is and if there is future possibility to partner further with 22 Division on the community organization level, condo board levels. Um, basically boots-on-the-ground people living here that are seeing these, these things go in and out, or is the best preferred method just the online reporting tool?
Natasha, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so to answer your question, uh, for Humber Bay shores, we don't have um, an NCO uh, neighborhood down in that area. Um, our neighborhood officers cover the east small flat, uh, west small flats in Dundas and Mayville area. Um, again, there is a business proposal that's gone up the chain, uh, up the chain of command uh, with regards to getting a NCO program or, sorry, having a neighborhood um, in the area of Lake Shore. Um, as of right now, there are no neighborhood officers in that area. Uh, that would be more of our community response unit as regards to that. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Yeah, um, that's, that's certainly acceptable. I, is there a published criteria for the NCO program? Or is it like, is there a certain stat that is required in the community to consider NCO?
Yeah, so how the, uh, how the neighborhoods are decided are on seven crime, major crime indicators. Um, I can't remember what they all are off the top of my head, but I do know um, some of them are uh, calls for service. Uh, socio-economic um, areas and access to certain resources, social resources, stuff like that. There's a bunch, there's a few other ones. I can't remember off the top of my head, but those are a couple that I can definitely remember. So for sure, the huge one is calls for service.
Wonderful. That's great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
As Natasha said, Steve, right now, it is our, our crew officers that take care of that neighborhood and um, PC Walker is, is one of them. Uh, so when her email is posted, I'm gonna have an officer post some of the emails now on the chat. Uh, Tommy, if you got my email, if you could bring up that uh, report and start typing them out. Um, Steve, if you want to send an email to Constable Walker, she would love to have you as a contact down there and then uh, you can discuss more about it with her.